Good evening. If everyone please rise. We'll start with the invocation from Councilman Burr.
Good morning, Pastor. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Help us to lead the city in the direction that we should be going. Help us to make the best decisions and keep us all healthy and in good spirits. In your name, the Lord.
Councilman Burr, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can you please proceed? This is a time for our public comments. And so, I'd like to see if there's anybody in the audience that has, that wants to have any moment to provide a comment, a public comment. Okay, here none. We'll move to old business. So we have no old business. So we'll now move to new business. Which we'll start with number one, which is livability Robbins Region renewal contract. City of Centerville, Councilman Armiho, Economic Development Director Bryant. And I defer this to our Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Hilton. In your packets, you should have a little pamphlet from me, a couple pages there. I wanted to just go over with you, the city currently has what's called an insertion order with the livability Robbins Region magazine. That's essentially just a placeholder for an ad that we have talked about getting, but have not signed a contract for. The deadline to move forward or not is tomorrow, end of date. The insertion order is for a full page ad at a cost of $4,980. That would get us one full page and 100 printed magazines for the year. It would also get us online presence for the magazine being posted on our online site. Before you make any decision as to whether or not to approve that, I wanted to just go over a couple of numbers with you. I reached out to the company and asked them for some analytics just to see a breakdown of what a year over year looks like as far as interaction with the public on an online platform. And you'll see in the packets that you have, on the first page there, they do have some analytics. At the top it will say, number two, Google search rank. That's actually number three. These analytics are through January. It's important to note though that the search rank is based primarily on the move to Water Robbins, Georgia specifically. You have to search for those words to be able to find that. If you simply search for Water Robbins, it's on the 14th page of a Google search. And if you search for Water Robbins, Georgia, it's the eighth page of a Google search. The items over to the right are just some demographic breakdowns. Those are for the entire state. Those are not for our region. So please don't be confused by those large numbers there. That's for any city in the state that is on this website. It's also important to note that Robbins Region is the only region in the state that has a printed magazine also on the internet and only one of a few in the country that have bought into this program. Let's see, most of the content that you will find on the website is not original content. It's just kind of pieced together that they pull from websites or from Chamber information and it's repeated year over year. There are no real articles in the website. It's more like blog posts or a top 10 style list. Website traffic is primarily driven by clickbait style posts which go to social media platforms. If you look on the second page there, you'll see a 2021 digital copy and a 2020 digital copy side by side. If you break down the numbers, these, the 2021 version came out in September. So we'll say for four months from September to January, this magazine online was getting approximately 150 views or less a month. And if you look at the year before, with that breakdown in the same timeframe, you're seeing 50 or less views a month. And it's important to note that the documents are, the shortest version is over 50 pages. The longest version is about 65. And people are spending less than three minutes viewing the entire document when they're looking at it online. So there's not really a whole lot of interaction happening there. On the third page, you'll see a breakdown of a couple of posts that the livability brand has put out on their social media channels. In a year's time, we've had three posts go out. Two are listed here. One actually went out after I was given the analytics. Our city is named in the first. Seven reasons to move to Water Robbins were just by name. Discover the neighborhoods of Robbins Region. There's a small word that talks mostly about the park. And then the one that went out on March 5th since we mentioned the gallery of malls is a shopping venue. You'll see here that the people reached number looks really big. What you want to pay attention to are the engagements, the clicks and the shares. Those numbers are not very good numbers. To be, for the second year that was done in February of 2021, in a year's time, that article was shared less than 100 times across all social media channels. It's important to note that a large portion of the interactions on these website links are either negative comments from people who have lived in the region before and no longer live here or who are spamming comments. So they're not real interactions. They're fake just for number purposes. And if you look at the fourth page there, there's a breakdown that compares the two years one over the other. We purchased no ad space in 2020, 2021. In 2021, 22, we did purchase a full page ad. The price for that was $4,835. In the year with no ad, we were still mentioned and we did get coverage. That does not change ad or no ad. The coverage will remain the same. We will be named the same. We will be given the same sort of recognition throughout the magazine whether there's an ad or not. Anytime we are mentioned, it's of most real significance. It's either our city is named or there's a small few sentence word in regard to the park, to the mall, or just Centerville living in general. There are numerous photos in the most recent publication, including the cover photo. It's a beautiful picture of the park. However, there's no identifier or credit given that shows that this is in Central Park. So if you don't live here and you just pick this up, you have no idea where this actually is.
It looks like it's in Water Robbins.
Yeah, it does look like it's, if you're reading it, it looks like it's.
It says, "Pro- Robin, Robin, Robin." It says nothing about the city. Our water tower is in the back, but you can't really read Centerville.
Right, so it, you know, they've taken the picture, which is great, but there's no mention anywhere in the magazine that says that that's actually here. So, just in comparison, this magazine here, it's called House County Living. You've probably all seen it. They're everywhere. It comes out twice a year. It's a professionally produced magazine. We pay $950 for a full page ad in this. If we do it twice a year, that's $1,900, which is still significantly less than the ad that we're looking at here. We do receive a discount for this magazine because we're a nonprofit entity and it's all locally produced with real stories, real data. And they talk to us to pull the data that they put into the magazine. So if they're doing a highlight on Centerville, they're going to interview the mayor. They're going to interview people who work in the city. They're going to talk to councilmen for the information that they're going to put into this. So I just wanted you to know that information so that we can move forward with the decision as to whether or not we want to pursue the ad in the Robbins Region livability for the year 2022, 2023.
Thank you very much. So the question and the motion that I'm going to make is that...
Well, I mean, is this, is this a point of reformation, Hilton, or is this a...
So, so they're asking whether or not we approve to renew it or not?
The deadline's tomorrow.
The deadline's tomorrow.
We have not signed a contract at this point.
Based on your, based on your information that we received at this point, I believe that it should not be moved.
Okay, so you make that motion with that. Remove that. I'll say.
I guess I would ask if we have to, if we're going to opt to not exercise this option, do we have to take any action? If we can just take no action at all and move on? I think that, it seems like that's the, that feels like the consensus of the room. It doesn't seem like it's a good deal for what we're getting.
Right. And, and we can take no action. I would just need to contact them and say, "Thank you for holding the place for us, but we will not be moving forward." I just need to know what I'm telling them one way or the other.
I'm just looking, this says 37,000 people reached for, what was it, $4,800?
Yes, and it's important to note that people reached does not actually mean where people read the articles.
I happen to be, I happen to be running an ad.
Yep.
I happen to be running an ad on Facebook for the church right now that's reached 3,600 people and it's costing $38.
Right.
So I, I think we're, this is definitely not a good deal for the money. So I, I just, I don't think we need a motion to vote. We can vote here. I want to. But I think we can just take no action on it and let it lapse.
Well, we already have a motion and a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we will move next to the, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move next to the Robbins Airport Space Mutual Aid Agreement. Councilman Wright.
Yeah, Chief Jones is here. He's going to walk us through this. This is just a quick change to some of the policies regarding some of the fire retardant foam that he's, and it's, it's carcinogenic, so he's going to fill you in on it.
Good evening, Council. Yes, tonight brought forth the new mutual aid agreement with the Robbins Airport Space Fire Department. And what we're requesting tonight is for the mayor's signature. Of course, he's not here. But like Councilman Wright has already mentioned, there's updates to the wording in this mutual aid agreement mainly pertaining to the firefighting foam. The base is going away from firefighting foam. The majority of, they will still have some on their shrooms and that's how I saw that the wording has changed. There is, they did add a renewal date, 20 years from the date of the signature. So we shouldn't have to renew it unless the more wording changes.
And I see that you know that the city attorney, Tiny, just reviewed this and signed off on it.
That's correct. She has reviewed it and she has no issues with the, with the document.
I move that we approve the mayor and Chief Jones to sign this new version of this document as written.
I second it. I second it. Is there any conversation? Any further conversation? So then, Mayor, we're at a point where we're ready to vote. Mutual aid agreement, I'm sorry.
I feel the call for the vote. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
Mayor, that vote was for you and Chief Jones to authorize the signing, so you should have a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Out of number three is the IGA City Utilities Board of Road. Councilman Armiho and Gregor Brunt, everybody.
Thank you, Gregor Brunt.
Thanks, sir. In your packet, you should have a copy of the Intergovernmental Memorandum of Agreement with Houston County. What this is, is in the past, when we had road projects done and the utilities needed to be relocated, the county would include the entire project in, into the SPAS program. Well, the county's auditors have stopped them from, from collecting money for the utility relocation. Everything else will still be the same. They just will not collect the money. We will need to pay, be billed and pay the contractor direct. And that's, that's the new wording in this agreement that we have from Houston County. City attorney has looked over it. She said everything is fine. We just ask to, for permission for the mayor to sign this agreement with Houston County.
Okay, so.
Subtle motion. All right, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Do you feel the discussion? I'm glad it was kind of simple, man.
Yeah.
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Thank you very much. That passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Number four is the award of the 2022 LNE project. And that's, Councilman Burr, do you have it again?
Thanks, sir. Last week, we had the bid opening for our 2022 LNE program. Range construction was a low bidder at $201,792 for our portion. And we're here tonight to ask permission to award, award the contract to Greens Construction out of Perry, Georgia.
Salute.
Sir.
All right, this is a, how much money is it getting from the state out of this one?
$94,000. Yeah, $94,000.
About $94,000. I'm sure that's coming out of the city.
Yes, sir.
Great. Okay. All right, anybody have any questions? If you're done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. You're done? That's a good one. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Out of the files, we send the motion on August 3rd, 2021 approval of lost revenue. Coronavirus SLF RF calculation, that is, Councilman Burr and the city accountant Harris, please.
Aye. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Back in August, we did bring forth to Mayor and Council the counterfactual calculation for revenue loss for the 2020 county year under the state and local fiscal recovery funds. Since then, the final treasury rule came out in January. Now there is an option to use the calculation or to use an election of the standard, called, to elect the standard allowance for dollar amount for lost revenue. This has kind of been done to streamline administration and reporting of the ARCA money, not only on the city municipality side, but also on the treasury side. What I'd like to do tonight, and what, what item five will do, is I'm asking the Mayor and Council to rescind the motion we made on August 3rd in 2021 that had approved lost revenue of $277,000 so that we can, in the next item, adopt the resolution which would have Mayor and Council elect to use the standard allowance in determining the amount of lost revenue that we will report.
Okay, do you want to say a motion at this point?
I make a motion to rescind the August 3rd, 2021 approval of lost revenue of $277,123.70 using the counterfactual calculation under the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds.
Second motion.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm glad they gave us opportunity. Number three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? That's been rescinded.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
So out of number six, there will be the resolution to elect standard allowance lost revenue. Coronavirus SLF RF, Councilman Burr and the city accountant Harris, again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At our prior meeting, the Mayor and Council had committed $2 million of our allocation of the state and local recovery funds for the water and sewer project. So tonight, I would ask Mayor and Council to elect the standard allowance to approve the balance of our ARCA funds. And our total money is $2,944,172. After our $2 million commitment to the water and sewer project, we'll have $944,172. So I am asking Mayor and Council to approve that amount as our project provision of government services due to lost revenue. And I also would like to have Mayor and Council allocate that portion over the next three budget years. So we would use $314,724 for budget year '22, '23, and '24.
Okay, do you want to say a motion? Certainly. Second. The second. All right. We have a motion to elect to use the standard allowance under the final treasury rule on the state and local recovery fund and calculate the Centerville revenue loss fund for the COVID-19 public health emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. Okay, here none. Resolution passes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much. All right, next item, number seven, here's a resolution, first budget amendment fiscal year 2022.
Now, as I understand it, this is just going to place officially into the budget all of the items that we have discussed and voted on in the past few sessions. So I see we got there.
Thank you, Councilman Burr. That is correct. They, we will also account for some of the grants that we didn't originally budget for, like the GOHS grant, the wellness grant, the first responder law enforcement grant from the state recovery fund. So within this budget amendment, and this is our first budget amendment for fiscal year 2022, we will increase our revenues by $330,128. That includes the $314,000 from ARCA that we just allocated to this budget year, the first responder state recovery money, $1,000 bonus. We had the $5,000 health and wellness grant, $36,000 insurance reimbursements, reimbursement and our GOHS grant of $13,000. Our expenditures will increase by the same dollar amount, $330,128. So we would not use any unassigned, any unassigned fund balance within this budget amendment. Most of those items that are increases in expenditures are either due to some grants or, or the items that we had approved in prior council meetings. If you'd like me, if you feel it's necessary to go through those, I can. But our budget amendment would take our original budget of $10 million, five... of $10,505,194 to $10,835,322, which would be an increase of $330,128, which is, again, funded by those grants and additional revenues. So there will be no use of unassigned fund balance.
I move to approve the budget amendment as written.
Have a motion and a second?
You have a second.
Do you feel discussion on it? You hear none? All motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? You hear none? Resolution is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
And item number eight here is the home-based business. An Ed Home Cleaning Service, home and Ed Window, 312 East Church Street, Lot 824, Councilman Bird and City Councilor, please.
Yes, I have looked over this application. I don't see any issues with it. It's a home-based business. They will only be storing supplies at their residence. They have permission from their property manager to do so. The business will be out cleaning people's homes and businesses. I don't see any issues with it. I just thought we could vote. It's approved.
Okay. Second. Make a motion and then a second. All right. Let's see here.
This one, this one I have it from...
Yes, that's it.
All right, have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Okay. You hear none? Welcome to our community. We appreciate you very much. You're part of our community. All right, we've got the Councilman, Council. Councilman B. Ho, thank you so much for sitting here.
Problem.
Did a good job.
It was good.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I appreciate it. Okay, post one, please.
It's just great to see businesses continue coming into the city. And as always, I want to thank the employees for everything that they do to make our community. And Director Bryant, excellent job of analysis on that problem solubility ad. That's all.
Okay. Post two, please.
No comments from you, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Post four. Three. Almost a good slip out of there.
I'd just like just little comments from Councilman Bird. And just thank all the employees for all that they do to make our life a bit more successful. Appreciate the effort that our county puts in to give us good information so we can actually know what's going on in the budget. And I hope all the hard work. Oh, yeah, so it's... Got cool. Was warm, then it got cool. And now it's warmer again, and I hope it stays that way. Seeing people get outside and exercise and walk and play in the park and excited about that.
I bet you're going to have the council chamber there.
No, not at all. It's outside and looking forward to getting out there. Everybody enjoy the good weather.
Now post four.
So I'd like to introduce Tess Chambers, our events coordinator. We just recently got hired on. Nice test right there.
Hello, Suzanne.
Please.
Hi.
So we didn't hear you. I was hoping it's who you were over there.
Yes.
Great.
So she's... We're really happy to have you. We are looking forward to your events and plans going forward. So, but you've got a whole great staff to work with, and trust me, you're going to enjoy working here in Centerville.
I can't wait.
We'd start on...
The 28th.
28th, yeah. Pretty soon after that, we'd start having our food prep projects again.
Yeah.
We have plans for you.
Absolutely.
Actually, we want a big sniffing slide to go down.
Okay. The gases.
But yeah. But don't let us manage anything.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you. It's exciting to be here.
I also, again, like to echo Councilman Bird's compliments to our... His comments. And that's really all I have here. I do encourage our citizens, especially... You've seen our fire department out there with their boots and their collection on the weekends. You know, certainly don't hesitate to contribute. Don't run over. Be very careful. Keep an eye on where you're going. You see our law enforcement folks, our fire folks, public works folks, any of our people who are out there, certainly stop and tell them hello. Thank them. You know, we've got a very close-knit community, and we like to keep it that way. So don't ever hesitate to stop and say hello to our folks, because they're out there working hard for you citizens. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. And our next medium, invite a friend of mine over here. He's an retired chief master sergeant, Eric Smith. He was in my squadron of the Royal Air Force. And he is since now an retired premier force chief master sergeant. He has a doctor, teaches at George Middlebury College. I want him to stop by and just say, if you would, say hello to us and be part of this. If something's a good idea, if you need that. Perfect, yeah. How was that? I don't have anything else tonight. I'd care about you being here. Anybody have any questions to tell us out there? Chris, ma'am?
I have a question about updates regarding the Airbnb at home-based business. What are the requirements? Are there time frame or any specifics about that?
Chris, do you have any... Anything about Airbnb or...
I mean, we currently have an ordinance that's in place. Your voice kind of sounds familiar. I don't know if I've talked to you before. And you're looking at maybe like September of next year? Is that correct? Okay, yeah. Same thing that we can kind of talk about over the following month. Once you get closer to that, then we can start doing the process. Because you have a place in Alberta. Okay. My men and women work pretty good on that. Okay. So, but I'll be more than happy to walk that with... You know, through that with you as time gets closer. There's just different... It's something new for us. So there's a lot of different regulations that will pertain to the Airbnb. Because you just have that one home, correct? Okay, yeah. Just break that out to me as we get closer. And then we can go over that. Okay?
It seems like every three or four months, the legislature makes a change to it. Add something to it, take something away from it, or change itself. As you say, as you get closer.
Yeah, we can walk that. And I mean, you're going to...
On their platform, they have started implementing the CTEC.
That's correct.
Yep. I think there's a tendency to...
I'm not exactly sure about the amount that this man there is. That's why they put that in place, and they encourage the municipalities to adopt. Or this is so we all can kind of be on the same platform. Yeah.
Here, you have one more thing, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor. So Centerville's going to have a cleanup week. And it's going to be April 11th through the 15th. And what we're going to be doing differently this year is that we're going to put your items that you need to discard up on your curb where you live. And as they come around and pick up trash, I'll pick up that as well.
They'll pick up on your regular scheduled date.
On your regular scheduled date and no additional charge.
That's correct.
So we'll get that out everywhere.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I ask everybody to take a minute. That's a great opportunity to put something out there.
So they'll pick up the things that they normally pick up? There are still certain things that they will not pick up, correct?
That's correct. In the very near future, we'll do some posts on Facebook and on our website and in both office sites of things that will be picked up and won't be picked up. Some things like batteries and tires will be limited and things that we can't get rid of. Tires, batteries, things like you said.
It's pretty year-stimmed on there, right?
That's correct. Yeah, I understand if you fill the paint cans with sand... Sand or some kind of sand, like cat litter or something like that.